Please, uh, silence your phones and have a seat.
No, no, of course not. No, no, no. I'm looking for the show up there, counsel. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right.
Oh, my God. Oh, he loves all this.
He don't come see prophesied.
He loves all this. He wants, he wants to police somebody kill somebody. He's so bad, he can't stand it.
I know.
The administrative conference for the Shreveport City Council is now called Order.
It is sick.
Let us sit down, please.
I have a case to be given by Councilman Corbin and our pledge should be given by Lieutenant Colonel Jenkins. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you today amidst a lot of things that have gone on in our world this past few days. Lay heavy on our hearts. We ask that you be with our country, be with our state, be with our city. Help us as we begin the healing process and look to the future. Be with those families that have been affected by the recent tragedy. Help us to be good leaders, good decision makers, and to make our city a better place.
Amen.
Would face the flag and join me in our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The mic's muted.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
There you are.
I think we got some. I'm wandering around back here. I heard there was this free seat over here.
Let's go out to be back in session again. Glad to see our deputy clerk back in her place.
That's something.
You feeling well?
You gotta do that intentionally almost.
You look good. So, uh, now, clerk, you may call the road.
Mr. Bradford?
Present.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Flurry?
Here.
Mr. Lynch? Mr. Corbin?
Okay. Thank you very much. Clerk. Tomorrow, we will be accepting the motion through the minutes of our administrative conference of July, of June the 22nd, I mean, 27th, what am I looking at? And June the 28th council meeting. At this point, we are, uh, recognize any distinguished guests communication from council members. Are there any communication or recognition from council members in mind?
I as, not Stephanie Lynch, but as Oliver Jenkins, sitting in Stephanie Lynch's seat.
Okay.
I've been getting, and I understand vegetation and, you know, grows fast in the summer and where that's always a battle force, and I recognize that. Um, but what, I think it's maybe even more burdensome than the growing of the grass and the rest. And I, I mean, I want to make sure it's clear that I don't expect miracles, but the trash part is, because when the two combined together, really makes it look terrible on our streets, roadways, you know? And what is the status of our street sweeper, the physical street sweeper itself? And, you know, the process to utilize it?
You want the status of the street sweeper?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We have two?
I thought we had two.
I think we have two, but.
He's off for the rest of the week.
And, and I, I mean, my issue, I mean, I know, I'm happy to say it publicly. One of them, we had somebody that didn't know how to drive it and had an accident. I get all that, but that was six months or five months ago. And I'm not trying to poke holes, but I just want to know what our plan is, because it's.
Now, let me, let me check on it. Mr. Woods is off this week on vacation.
Okay.
And I'll send you an email on the operations of both of those. You know, those, the street sweepers were originally designed for and participate in main arteries and, and those types of thoroughfares. They don't participate in just regular neighborhood streets or even some of the smaller streets that a lot of people think that they do. And so I'll get you a list of where they do go in the city, and so you'll have it, you'll have a, you'll have that. Anytime that you come across something that needs to be cleaned up that you, it catches your eye. I get emails, the mayor gets emails, we get pictures and photos all the time, and we try to address it as quickly as possible. But I think you're right, and the combination of grass and trash at the same time. We've tried to address, because sometimes they've cut the grass and not picked up the trash, which makes it even worse. Because now you've got a nice clean area with grass cutting, but you've got little millions of pieces. And so I know that, that Mr. Wood has addressed that with the contractors to make sure that they do pick up the trash in those areas. But to date, I can tell you they've cut 8,500 lots. They're, they're well in advance of where they were last year. They try to keep up with the right of ways. Again, it does, we get an occasional shower and that Bahia grass. The grass only grows about that much in a week, but the Bahia grass grows that much, and it looks like it didn't get cut. We got a notice today from a lady who called and a complaint said, "You haven't cut my grass." We've cut it three times in her, in her lot next door, and it's just being able to keep up with it with the dollars that we have allocated for that. But I'll be glad, I'll be glad to get you a, an update on the street sweepers and where they go, what they do.
Yeah, no, no, that would be very helpful.
Sure.
And I, and I recognize, not in residential, and I make that very, very clear, but we're talking major thoroughfares, exit ramp, okay. Then the next question is, exit ramps from things like 49, 20, is that? If that's on us, right?
Well, they're state highways, and we do get a smaller lotment from the state to help with some of our.
Yeah, the, the contract that we have is for the right of ways. The actual exits are the state's responsibility.
So when we did that cooperative endeavor agreement, is it?
That's for right of way, making sure that we mow the right of ways going down to the exits and those types of areas.
So the right of ways being the, the grassy areas that don't have road on them?
That's correct.
Is that kind of what we're talking about there?
That's correct.
Like, does it include, um, like, the median between a separated interstate?
Any grass cutting on the interstates. We have a agreement with the state that we do this for a fee. Of course, the fee does not cover our costs.
Yeah.
But instead of letting the interstates look completely unmanageable, we do what we can with the dollars that we're given and get to them as quickly as possible. And, and the city expends significantly more than the state uses to pay us for those, um, keeping those maintained.
And by the way, they just cut those.
Yeah.
Those funds.
And I'm not, now let me make sure that I, so I'm not, my intent is certainly not to complain about the grass part of this whole discussion. Mine is really the cleanliness of the roadways themselves. And that, so, and I, I kind of tied them in at the beginning, but I didn't necessarily mean that to be the, I was just saying, it just exacerbates the grass problem, because now, as opposed to being right on the ground, they're floating around all over the place. Anyway, so those, the actual interstates and exits off of the interstates to clean up the gravel, the tires, the.
Trash and what have you.
The trash.
It's the responsibility, it's the responsibility of the state.
Okay, and our mechanism to.
Now, we have, we have done some of that cleaning just out of necessity, because we get tired of looking at it. Mayor gets tired of looking at it, we get tired of looking at it, because the exit ramps are some of our worst areas for trash and blight, and they're also the gateways to our cities that our travelers and visitors see when they leave the interstate and they're seeing their first stop in Shreveport, and they look to the left and the right, and it's filthy.
49 to Kings Highway is one that jumps out lately as being kind of problematic. And so, and that, and I don't know.
When we have maintained it in the past, we have to get state approval, because you have to set up certain conage and some other specific criteria that the state has listed for you to be able to get out there and actually clean those areas up. If you'll notice, when you come into Shreveport and you're exiting on Spring Street, that's one of the worst areas that we had for years and years, and we worked with the state to try and get that cleaned up. They, they weren't accommodating, but we had to work with them to create a plan where we could get out there and actually clean it up too. And we ended up doing that. Of course, you know, two months later, it looks like we haven't touched it.
No, no, and I, so that answers, and that was a little bit, people asked me about that, and I mentioned this cooperative endeavor agreement, and I'm, obviously, I'm mistaken of what I thought that entailed. So, I appreciate knowing that, and, um, you know, I'm happy to go, I mean, I'm happy to send emails to my distinguished colleagues in the state legislature if that's what's appropriate.
That'd be great.
And we'll be glad to send you a copy of the actual agreement.
Yes.
And the rest of the council, so you'll have it.
But no, no, I mean, I want them to clean up if they're responsible. Because I got from somebody that they complained to a certain senator, and he cleaned it up on the Bossier Parish side of the Jimmy Davis Bridge. I'm like, well, sure would have been nice if, since they represent both sides.
Well, not according to him, he represents one side.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the complaining seat, and I'm gonna return to the extremely positive and thankful Oliver Jenkins. So, yeah, that, that, I appreciate.
Please write that from the record.
I had one more thing that I noticed. If, if you happen to reach out to unsaid senator about this, there's another, um.
I didn't say it was a senator.
Was it? Oh, I think he did say, I think he did say it was a senator, he just didn't say.
Jenkins.
I didn't think he would say who it was, but, um.
Congressman did.
But, uh, okay, an elected official of some sort. But anyway, if, if anyone is reaching out to him, there is an area that I also noticed that is state, and I had to ask about it, because it is state maintained, and, um, with the flooding that we've had in recent years, it concerned me. As long Yuri Drive, where, you know, there's a lot of commercial development, and it's very kind of fast-growing area, the grass is cut around the median, and there's a paved drainage ditch in the middle. But that drainage ditch is full of grass clippings. Like, it hasn't been cleared, cleaned out since it was built, and it's, you know, not 10 years old, and it looks like it's completely ineffective. So, the state, that is the state's property, and it would be nice if they had functioning drainage in such a valuable part of our town. So, um, that might be another one to share. I'll do it myself.
Okay. Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir.
What I understand, the Red River Bridge on I-20 would be state.
Yes, sir.
And like, on 49, where 31, 32 comes in there, those ramps would be state.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Any, any road that leaves the city is a state highway, generally speaking.
Councilman Corbin.
But this, even, so, you mean, so for instance, Yuri Drive, okay? That is a highway, right? State highway.
State highway.
Highway one.
Is it their responsibility to keep Yuri Drive clean?
No, we, we cut Yuri Drive because it ends up coming inside of the city.
But state highway, I mean, but interstates don't fall into that category, they are supposed to.
We have a separate agreement to maintain the interstates for the states as far as the right of way.
Good.
And keeping, keeping the grass cut and maintained.
But then garbage, per se, on the side of the road, even, so Yuri, we are responsible for, for that between the streets. But those other interstates fall entirely on the street?
As far as the cleanliness, yes.
Okay.
And, and of course, let, let me say this, you know, we've been pushing, trying to get the city clean. And every weekend, you know, I fuss at my people to go out there and get it, even if the state doesn't get it, if it's coming into our city. The next day is, it's right back there again. You know, I wish we had enough dollars to just pay somebody to go out every morning and pick up behind people. And it's not all of our people, it's people who come in, because we got, we've got a, you know, a medium-sized metro city. And, and, you know, people come in for all these activities, and they just throw trash out. What we've been trying to do is get law enforcement to write tickets. That will help us, but it's very difficult for us to do that. And I've sat down with all the law enforcement agencies around here and asked them, please write the tickets, that will help us. That is a big priority for this mayor, and we've pushed and pushed and pushed for it. We've bought, you know, equipment, and we've got neighborhoods involved. And, you know, sometimes I think it's kind of cynical to some people, because they keep throwing it out there. But, you know, if y'all have some ideas, I'd welcome those ideas. We, we just, we just don't have enough funds to pay somebody to go out every day after people to pick up their trash. But we're gonna keep, we're gonna, we're not going to stop, you know? We're gonna keep pushing.
As a parent, I do sometimes clean after, clean up after my children.
Oh, yeah.
But my hope is when they're grown up, they will clean aft, clean up after themselves.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And our level of individual responsibility, I say this, and I've said it, it's amazing for somebody that lived in California. I mean, if somebody throws something out of a car window in California, you'd have a five-car pileup of people trying to pull that person over. Here, it is just something that we're willing to accept, and I think it's unacceptable, and it does.
It is unacceptable.
And it does cost us inordinate amount of resource.
It does, absolutely.
And I'm all for it, I, I, like, I want to make sure I wasn't trying to be critical, I just wanted to know who the responsible party was for those type of roads.
And, and it didn't just start on my watch. Please know that on my watch, we've been trying to solve it.
Yes.
I just need them to go in the record.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilman, for those, Councilman Corbin.
Brian, I'll put together a list of some, some streets that I've noticed over the past week, especially like if there's left turn lanes or there's a center turn lane, that is a good area that we need to run a street sweeper down, because between cigarette butts and.
Right.
Glass and all that, those are getting pretty nasty.
If you have private mobs with a list, we'll be sure to get on them.
Talking about grass cutting, you know, I'm glad we've cut over 8,000 lots, but I wonder sometimes if, if cutting all these lots that maybe really shouldn't be our responsibility, but we have to do it, I understand that, is that taking away from parks and right of ways getting cut and things like that?
Absolutely.
And I'm sure that I know the answer to that before, before y'all nod your head. But I just.
Yes, it is.
With more lots coming in our inventory, I just don't see how we can expect to stay on top of it. And I, I drove by the duck pond yesterday, and it was, you know, just what Brian's talking about, that grass is, was this tall out there. Maybe it's been cut today, but I, I don't, I'm not sure we're winning the war. And I wish I had a better, I wish I had a suggestion, and I know y'all wish I, that somebody had a better suggestion.
Absolutely.
But it's, it seems to be harder and harder every year to keep up, whether it's a wet year, a dry year, a, you know, whatever. I have talked with Mr. Wood about this. Yuri Drive, and I'll say from 70th Street south, where our crews or contract crews are cutting those right, right of ways on either side of the street, we continue to have maybe a 10-foot section or a 12-foot section that just never gets cut. And what's happened now is there's a section in front of the new location of Strong's, where there were, it had gone so long that cattails grew there, and now somebody's come and poisoned all that. So it's just dead from herbicides on it. If you go further south, there's some people who have privacy fences on the back of their lots in, I guess that's Broadmoor South, University South, and there's so much vegetation growing on that fence and out into the right of way, it can't be cut. Maybe that property owner needs to be contacted, or, or maybe we go in there and, and cut it all down the first time. I, I don't know, but it kind of gives us this checkerboard look where we mow, we don't mow, we mow, we don't mow. And I'd like to address that. And then the final thing is, I'm not sure what the bayou is called, I don't know if it's Sand Beach Bayou or if it's something else, but it's the bayou that crosses Highway 1 just south of Chevy Land, by the old Wright Sound Gallery. There is so much vegetation in that bayou and growing up around the bridge that people who have to walk on the 12-foot sidewalk on that bridge can't do it. And people are having to walk in traffic, because there's so much vegetation on that bridge. I don't know if that's a levy board, I don't know if that's a state, but I, I can tell you that I have turned in requests for six years, and it really hasn't changed. But that, that bridge, along with many others in the city, needs some attention for people who walk and run and ride their bikes, because we end up cutting, we don't end up cutting around the corners of the, of the bridge. I mean, the one at, on Southfield, that goes over Bayou Pierre is another, another example. Didn't mean to turn this into a, a grass complaint session, but it is that season, it is.
It is, and, and I want to thank Property Standards on a similar note. I had, no, it's not a bridge, but sometimes in our commercial areas that are near residential areas, particularly in communities where a lot of people are pedestrian to, to get, you know, use pedestrian pathways to get to and from their services. Like, on Linwood, and it's still there, although Property Standards has already addressed a portion of it, and they've cited the second portion of it, because it's two different owners. But there was multiple blocks of, like, a vacant lot that had grown so far out into Linwood that you couldn't walk on the sidewalk to get to the Family Dollar or the churches or the, you know, the, the businesses along Linwood, because the branches from these trees were growing out into the street, and you just couldn't walk through it, you know? And, um, you know, those are the kind of violations that I know we have, we, we just have such a large volume of, of things to be dealing with, obviously, you know? But, um, but one of the things I notice a lot, because I represent a lot of neighborhoods where, where people have to walk or ride bikes to get places, is, you know, these areas where property owners let their grass grow all the way over the sidewalk, or they let their bushes grow all the way out over the sidewalk. And so there is a sidewalk there, people will say we need more sidewalks. Well, we have sidewalks there in a lot of our city that the property owner is responsible for maintaining, and they're not doing it, you know? And so if we can be mindful of cracking down on that at any chance we can, I know that there's, there's no shortage of violations that they notice on a day-to-day basis. But that's one that I think really helps people use the city more to be able to navigate the pedestrian right of ways that are there now.
I, I'll tell you, we, we're going to revisit a lot of the things that we're doing with the grass cutting and the, and the trash pickup and all of that. But I want council members to know, my employees are not sitting on their hands, we're out there every single day. We've got so many private owners who don't take care of their stuff, and we're trying to, you know, cite them, and oftentimes, we're cutting their stuff, then charging them, trying to get the money back. You know, we got thousands of, thousands of these places that really need attention. And, um, and so, you know, we'll, we'll put on, I think, in hats again and try to address what y'all have said today, in addition to the hundreds of others that we're trying to address. Just know that we're not sitting around. They're working every day, it's just that they can't get to everything. And by the time they finish, you know, several hundreds, then they've grown up again, and so. But if we have some that have never had the attention, then we want to make sure that we can get to those. So, we hear you, and we'll, we'll come up with something to see if we can do better.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and we know we are doing to make sure that we keep the city clean and safe and a good place to, to live and work and go to church and have fun. I have three items I, I want to mention. Tomorrow, uh, there's two resolutions that, at the time of communication from council members, I'm gonna ask the rules to be suspended so that we can take up Resolution, uh, 144 and 145. I have both of those parties to come to receive those. And with the Morrison-Dixon resolution, I've asked the President of Morrison-Dixon, Paul Dixon, to sort of give us a review of Morrison-Dixon, as well as the future of Morrison-Dixon. They have grown tremendously over the years, and, uh, have over 700 employees, and they have some great visions for the future and how Shreveport could factor into that future. So he's gonna, I asked him to give us maybe a 12-minute presentation on that, Morrison-Dixon. So I hope and trust that the council members be receptive to that. And, and the other one was the, um, resolution regarding Randy Johnson. That will be a very minimum presentation with, with his wife. As well as, um, let me, let me also thank Mayor yourself and your outstanding CEO, as well as some departments that helped over the weekend, starting Friday, to address several issues that turned out to be almost emergency issues, and I want that your administration respond. I wanted, I wanted to thank you for that, including on Saturday, where it needed to have been done for one of our business people, and they were able to get him back up and running. I appreciate their cooperation. That was over the weekend, as you know, several incidents, one in the state, one in our neighboring state. Then on Friday, there was a release done by CNN saying that Shreveport may have, may have been, uh, on alert for some, some activity. You're not aware of that? I want us to chief aware of that. Can he, is he, can, is he in a position to speak on that?
Yeah, I'm sure he's out there.
You're not? Any council members aware?
Old Facebook post.
I think, I think it came from the social media post.
No, no, it was, it was a release from CNN.
But it, but it, it was based off of Homeland Security's reaction to a social media post.
Oh, is that what it was?
That there may be some action taken in this community.
Okay, well, I'm interested in, in, I never know, but I was wondering if, if there is a protocol in place to address social unrest if, if it comes our way.
Yes, sir, we're trained and prepared.
Are you aware of the, of the, uh, communication that was, that was sort of circulating around the city and the parish this weekend?
I am. It's, uh, erroneous information, none of it's credible.
Wasn't credible.
Facebook, social media driven. We're good. We're good. Until further notice, we're good. Something happens, we got it. Rest assured, we're, we're trained and prepared, we're professionals, and we're gonna do what's right.
All right, well, I, I'm good. I'm, I just wanted to make sure that council member was aware, was aware.
We're, we're prepared and do it. Thank you.
You know, if there had been something to it, we would have let you know. I always try to do that. I was aware of the, I didn't, I didn't even know about CNN, but I did know about the, the media post, and, and we discovered there was really nothing to it, but we did follow up and got to the root of it.
Well, Mayor, you know, you and I was at an event on Saturday, and as, as well as the DA, and he mentioned something that, that sort of disturbed me, but that was him. So, but he said, what he said, opposite of what the chief said, he said it was credible, so, but I, I don't want to trust the chief.
Yes, absolutely.
And my last statement is that, um, you had, you had proposed to re, to restructure the way the solid waste pickup with the knucklebone and all that was gonna be handled. Have you had a chance to address that yet, Mayor?
We have, and I think I spoke to it briefly about a month ago, and again, Mr. Woods is not here. We'll give you a further follow-up when he returns. But we have changed from the phone call to make an appointment. You can still call the number and make an appointment, and we'll make a special effort to be out there. But right now, we're, we're picking up everything that's put out in solid bulk as we see it on any particular route. The supervisors have been specifically instructed to drive the routes on a daily basis to ensure that when the regular trucks go through there, the knucklebooms kind of follow them around, and they pick up everything on every street and every neighborhood. And speaking with Mr. Woods this morning, he says that we're actually ahead. We've caught up with some of that large debris that's been placed on the road. Obviously, as soon as we pick it up, there's some more that ends up going down. But I, I think, I think, I think we're very pleased with what we've seen in the turnaround and the knucklebooms not have, picking up at one house and then driving by a house right next door to it that had the, the, you know, some, some other large debris out there. And, um, from what I understand, this new method is, is, is helping out tremendously, and just seems to be a common sense approach that was needed and necessary. But again, if, if the council or an individual has a concern, just be sure and let me or Mr. Woods. Mr. Woods and CC me, so I know about it, that we can follow up on it, make sure that it gets addressed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. And finally, let me just reiterate again that Morrison-Dixon 175th anniversary this weekend, there's several events, I mean, very positive events that, it will be mentioned tomorrow that he will be inviting the council members and the mayor to participate in. There's gonna be some eating, there's gonna be some cruising up and down the river, there's gonna be some concerts, so they expect the 200, I'm sorry, 2,000 visitors to come to town.
And I won't be able to make that one, sir. I already got two or three things scheduled, because I didn't know about it, and I've had these on my books, but I certainly, I, I copied Brian on one of them to go and kind of welcome those folks, but I'm, I've already committed to this social justice group.
There's one on Thursday, I'll speak to you about it, that, that the proclamation, dual proclamation, I think, that you couldn't attend, but I would, I would be there, and he wanted us to go look out somewhere.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I mean, my relationship with the Dixons goes back over 50 years, so that's why I'm so excited about what's going on and, and what they've accomplished down there at their, at their location. Okay, is there any other communication from council members? If not, mayor?
Not today, thank you.
Not today, okay, thank you, ma'am. Do you have any, down to reports from Property Standards? Anybody have any questions for Mr., additional question for Mr. Green at this time? I see none, Mr. Green, thank you, we'll hear from you later in the meeting. And the other reports, I, we received those, and...
Should have been revenue collections and the certi bond on Friday, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we, we received those electronically, thank you, sir. Anybody not receiving? Okay, thank you. It appears there are no Public Standard, I mean, no public hearing tomorrow. Adding items to the agenda, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir, adding legislation to the agenda, regular meetings only and public comments on motions to add items to the agenda. Ordinance 70 is an ordinance amending the 2016 budget for the general fund. This is the managed care ordinance to allow us to receive additional fundings for the EMS managed agreement that we're in with the UPL program in the state. Just allows us to pick up some more cash.
All right. I'm getting thumbs up all around, so we, we love to hear that, picking up more cash.
Absolutely.
Part of it. So we, we are, hopefully, we'll be in support of adding this agenda. There are, I have no public comment requests at this time on items regarding the agenda. So, Mr. Crawford, you may continue.
Confirmations and appointments, Minnesota Fire and Police Civil Service Board Captain Michael Covert, Sr., was elected by his peers to serve a vacant position on the Fire and Police Civil Service Board. A human resource board, Mr. Billy Casey, and then the housing authority of Shreveport, Mrs. Shirley Pearson.
Thank you, and we had a chance to visit with these individuals at our last work session.
Yeah.
They all seem to be very capable and qualified to serve in these, these areas. Any council members have any other comments regarding these ordinance?
Get a point.
All thumbs up. Okay, Mr. Crawford, you may continue.
Getting into the consenting agenda legislation to adopt ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 143 is a resolution accepting the dedication of a 57.5-foot radius turnaround at Sand Beach Boulevard in Fern Crossing. Resolution 144 recognizes Morris and Dixon Company LLC, 175th year in business, and resolution 145 recognizes the contributions of Randy Johnson as an advocate for the improvements of his neighborhood and the city of Shreveport.
Are there any comments or questions regarding these resolutions?
I have one question about that Fern, the Fern Crossing dedication.
Yes.
It's in your district, I recognize that.
It is.
But I am trying to ascertain what, they are giving that to us? What is the, tell me what the intent of this whole thing is.
Okay, councilmen, a couple of months ago, we closed and abandoned an old portion of Sand Beach Boulevard that never had been constructed in order for them to do their development. But as a condition of that closure and abandonment, they had to construct a cul-de-sac at the end of the existing street for turnaround purposes. And this right-of-way dedication will facilitate construction of that cul-de-sac.
I remember this now, this was the moment where they're building that, like, managed care kind of facility, and then have the turnaround. So, we closed and abandoned the street first, I mean, the remainder of the street, i.e. as if it was gonna connect into Fern, so... Now, we are, it says we're accepting the dedication.
Yeah, they're giving us back...
They're giving back the radius of this.
The cul-de-sac radius, yes, sir.
I got you, okay. Thank you.
And there's a doc, there's a document.
Oh, I saw the document. I couldn't decide who was giving what to whom, because in the document, it had owners, then it had abandoned, then it had...
Gotcha.
So I was like, well, if we own it, why is anybody giving it to us?
Understood.
Okay, thank you very much for those...
Sorry, I'm just a simple man.
That's good, yeah.
I'm relaxed. I'm sure everybody else got it.
No, in your defense, there was an awful lot of lines on that survey. That is a survey where I think just about every right-of-way of any utility possible goes through there, so it wasn't a clear, clear, easy read.
Correct.
May I continue, sir?
Resolutions, agenda, regular agenda legislation, these are resolutions on second reading and final passage, all which will require only one reading. Resolution 124 waiving the effects of certain provisions of Section 78-359 of the city's Code of Ordinances relative to the length of a proposed new boat slip at 2905 Municipal Pier Road. Resolution 135 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described properties within the city of Shreveport. Resolution 137 declares the intentions of the city of Shreveport to issue taxable water and sewer revenue bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $20 million for the purposes of paying for a portion of the cost of construction and acquisition, additions, extensions, and improvements to the combined drinking water and wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal systems of the city. Resolution 138 authorizes and providing for the waiver of all permits and inspection fees required for the construction of a new residential construction at 617 Olive Street. This is for the Community Renewal Friendship House. Resolution 139 authorized the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Port of Caddo-Boscher Parish of Caddo and Caddo Levy District to purchase and utilize a sandbag machine.
Okay, are there any questions or discussion regarding these council members?
Just on 135, I know that that had been on, and then I got the idea that maybe y'all were trying to resolve it without expropriating.
We were.
It looks like maybe that avenue didn't...
It didn't work.
Didn't prove productive.
We've made multiple attempts to work something amicable out with that property owner. That property can't be ever developed because of its location.
It's a very small lot, it has nothing on it.
Very small, and you can't, they can't use it for anything, and so we've tried to reach what we can, and of course, you know, when we have it appraised, we have to provide the appraised amount. We've offered that within, without any type of response, and we've tried to contact them and meet with them on multiple occasions, and we feel like this is our last avenue.
So did, did they, did they, they have a negative response, or just no response?
Primarily was no response.
Okay.
We spoke with them several times.
And they just...
Did not respond to our offer.
Fair enough, fair enough. I mean, we need it, they can't use it, so move forward.
We may can deduct all the maintenance we've done on that mowing grass on it over the years.
Seriously? Do we have an accounting of?
Yeah.
They may owe it to us anyway.
That's right.
Let me, let me ask you this, mayor and Mr. Crawford, I mentioned it a while back, that was, on last council meeting, there was at least five instances to where we passed legislation waiving fees in or allowing certain city resources to be used by others. Not now, but I, I, I would, I would like the discussion, have the discussion, on how can we actually put a dollar value on those items?
Certainly.
I think it's important that we know, when we vote on, on using, allowing fees to be waived, or equipment, or some resource to be used, that we ought to know what the, what the, what the value of that, of that legislation.
Absolutely.
We get, we get those requests individually sometimes, and, and I think the criteria is basically that it has to be of some value to the city for us, for us to even consider putting it on the agenda, is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes. And, and most of these are like nonprofits who are helping disadvantaged, you know, people, and, and they don't, and I agree with you, people need to know that.
Yeah, I mean, if we waive some fee, I mean, some, some other value is, is very...
Yes.
Very large value.
When they say that we don't help people...
Or when they say we haven't given their organization any money, and it's an organization that I know darn well, we give them, you know, several thousand worth of free use of stuff every year, I'm like, well, I don't know, that's not really fair, you know? Because we could be charging people for stuff we don't charge them for.
Absolutely.
Granted, it is for the benefit of the community.
And it's loss of revenue to the city, too.
And that's...
Which counts, too.
Yeah, it's loss of revenue to the city.
And I'm saying with us in, in sort of a crunch, because we behind a little on, on some tax expectations.
We way behind, yeah.
Way behind.
Way behind.
And I would like to even just, you know, we, we don't want to compromise helping people, but at the same time, if there's some situations where that, that, an entity may not need the whole thing waived, they could at least pay something, you know?
Right.
To help, to help offset that.
And we evaluate that, by the way, Mr. Chairman.
But I mean, you know, but, I mean, and I'm gonna say, that's, that's forecoming. I mean, it's been done for years, and, but I think for the consciousness of the, of the council, to know that we are, say, I mean, waiving a fee that this is the value of what we're waiving.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Agreed.
What we'll do in the future, Mr. Chairman, on those that we're waiving some type of fee of providing equipment at a cost to the city, we will attach that to the legislation.
Okay, very good, because I mean, sometimes...
At least what our estimate is. Sometimes it's gonna be an estimate if they want chairs and tables, but if it's a certain fee for waiving a permit, we should be able to come up with those exact costs, so...
Fantastic. Because sometimes when you allow resources to be used, I mean, that includes labor costs.
Yes.
To deliver the, the...
That's right.
The resource or the equipment, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to at least get to that, where we can be conscientious of that, too. All right, Mr. Crawford, you may continue, sir.
Speaking of that very thing, introduction of resolutions not to be adopted Friday, July 26, 2016. Resolution 146 is a resolution authorizing and providing for the waiver of fees, permits, inspection taff, and inspection fees required for the construction of a 50-unit affordable housing elderly development within the city of Shreveport. This is the Olive Branch Ministries in cooperation with Keener Immunity Development.
Mount Olive.
Olive Branch Ministries.
Yes, Mount Olive.
Mount Olive.
Oh, that's Mount Olive.
Church, but that's their sub LLC.
Right.
It's a property entity of that.
Introduction of ordinances not to be...
Whoa, 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 I gotta, we gotta break between B and C.
Oh.
Okay?
Yeah. Any, any comments or discussions on this item?
Okay, so, and, once again, I'm just trying to find out information. Where does that 4 mil, 4.6 million come from? They say the development is a $4.6 million project, so is that, or what portion of that is federal dollars, and what are they individually raising, and tell me how the whole thing works?
They received a diverse group of financing. First, they received 4% tax credits from Louisiana Housing Finance Corporation. Then they received a first mortgage, and some equity that they put into it, and probably about 1% is federal dollars.
Okay, so you got $4 million, 4.6 million. They got, let's say they sell their taxes at, at par, which they can't do, but for the sake of this discussion, so they got 94 there, I mean, they still have 90, they have four there, so they still have 96, and there's 1% of federal dollars. So where is the other 95% of the 4.6 million dollars coming from?
Take them from the mortgage.
Well, they'll have a first mortgage.
You can't mortgage something at 95%.
They'll have a first mortgage, but the 4% is tax credits, so probably gonna yield about a million dollars.
A million dollars on a $4.6 million, that shocks me.
They're probably gonna get probably about 70% per dollar on those tax credits. That's what they're selling for about right now, when they do their syndication.
So when you say 4%, what do you mean, 4% of what?
Oh, that's what they're called, 4% tax credits. Louisiana Housing Corporation get federal tax credits from the Internal Revenue Service.
Okay, so that's of their total 4.6 million. Okay, I got you, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Thank you, Ms. Moore. Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any other, well, we just had this one, introduction item. Okay, Mr. Crawford, you may continue.
Want to make sure. Introduction of ordinances not to be adopted Friday, July 26, 2016. Ordinance 69 is an ordinance amending the 2016 capital improvements budget. This will create, will eliminate one capital project for the police property and evidence storage facility, $416,914, and create a new police department facilities maintenance and improvement capital project.
So that's, so we're taking the excess money from the, the storage facility and placing it in a project that would do ongoing maintenance on, on that facility, or on all...
Any, any police facility. So we're looking at the police academy, we're looking at the storage and property facility room, and the city jail. All of those are in need of some type of...
And so that money is able to be applied towards any of those projects?
Correct.
That's wonderful.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but even though, I mean, we can't say maintenance, right, it has to be capital, right?
It isn't a capital project.
So it would be capital, I mean, it's not paying for operational maintenance, it's paying for major maintenance.
Capital improvements. So I think you're right, Councilman McCow, and we've done this before with the convention center. If you remember, we had some funds remaining after that construction that we rolled into capital improvements for the convention center.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we don't...
No, you're correct, this is similar to that.
For instance, if they did an energy efficiency upgrade, that's maintenance of the facility, but it's a capital expense, you know? So it'd be that type of...
Okay, thank you, you may continue, sir.
Ordinances on second reading and final passages, this is ordinance 159 amends and reenacts chapter, or Section 62-78 of the Code of Ordinances relative to recreation fees. This is online booking and green fees for our spar golf courses. Ordinance 60 is another spar ordinance amending Section 62, Article 1, Division 2 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to the Department of Public Assembly and Recreation. This creates the new shrew, spar advisory PAC council. Ordinance 61 amends Section 26-106 of the Code of Ordinances relative to the fee schedule for services rendered by the police department, setting one flat fee of $10 per report for all online reports that are issued. Ordinance 62 amends the 2016 budget fund. This is for the actual expenditure of the $500,000 that the council approved the mayor to enter into an agreement with, so the police can actually spend those funds. Ordinance 63 amends the 2016 budget for the general fund, and this is removing, or moving $3 million from concrete panel replacement where it was inadvertently and accidentally put in professional services to improvements in equipment where it can be utilized. Ordinance 64 amends the ordinance number 10 of 2016 for closing and abandoning alleyways between the 1600 block of Clay Street and Alston Street in Cutcliffe subdivision in Section 35 T18 North R14 West. The administration tomorrow will ask for this to be removed from the agenda. Ordinance 65 is a zoning case, C-44-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The city of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located in the northwest corner of Cody and Hern, here, Herndon, Herndon Street. Caddo Parish, Louisiana, being the same as hereby changed from R3 Urban Multi-Family Residential District to B1 PUD, buffer business plan unit development district with preliminary site plan approval. Ordinance 66 is a zoning case number C-45-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The city of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the east side of North Market, 570 feet south of Nelson Street, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, LA, being the same as hereby changed from B3 Community Business District to I1 Light Industrial District. Ordinance 67 is zoning case number C-46-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The city of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the north side of East Kings Highway, 195 feet west of Zeke Drive, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, being the same as hereby changed from B2 Neighborhood Business District to B3 Community Business District to B3E Community Business Extended Use District, limited to a dog boarding facility only with site plan approval. Ordinance 68 zoning case number C-52-16, amending Chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances. The city of Shreveport... The City of Freeport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the south side of Southern Loop, 700 feet west of Norris Ferry Road, Freeport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, being the same as hereby changed from B2E Neighborhood Business Extended Use District to B2 Neighborhood Business District.
Okay, thank you for the reading of the ordinances and if there are any questions from council members. Councilman Efferson.
I just would like to ask everyone to support ordinance 65. Certainly that's one that the constituents in my district are very supportive of and look forward to passing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm sure somebody's a better reader of these things than I am. So with the SPAR council and the PACs, whatever it's called, the park councils.
She'll even come on.
Okay, what are we, because ordinance just says blank, delete, delete, and so I just kind of want to know, I know what we have today and you and I have talked about utility and focus, so what are we pushing for, what are we doing?
This actually takes SPAR council out of the ordinance. That's what this resolution does.
Okay, so no more SPAR council or that's where your comments about advisory.
As we know it today. Right. So what we'll do now, each of our rec centers have what we call a park advisory committee and they're made up of the citizens in that neighborhood. They will elect a representative to serve on advisory council, but it won't be by ordinance, it'll be a policy and a procedure. And that way, they elect them, they serve as that liaison between that rec center and administration. We'll still have ongoing meetings, but you won't have, and you know, SPAR council's been around in its form, it is now, I guess, forever. And it just has not become as effective because the role they were to serve was happening at that PAC group level. Because the PAC members really are that grassroots group who is planning, programming, doing all those things that happen at our rec centers. And so they will serve, they will elect someone from their PAC group to serve on this advisory council. We're just taking it out of the ordinance form.
Okay.
And also just to add to that, the old SPAR council members can still serve on this particular committee.
We've asked them.
As meritus.
Yes, ma'am.
So that they don't feel like we pulled them out the pasture, they can still serve. But we think that this group is going to be the robust group because they're the people who really make it happen in all of the community centers.
Yes. But those who are serving now have been asked to stay and they bring, you know, lots of institutional knowledge and experience, so I think it will be. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Any other regarding these ordinances?
Why is 64 being removed?
Why is 64 being removed?
Yeah, we'll ask conversation whether it's going to be postponed.
Yeah, city engineers requesting it be removed. So I'll ask that they explain it.
Ask Mr. Moore.
Yes, ma'am.
There was an alleyway where the consultant who filed the subdivision plat for the church inadvertently indicated the alley had been enclosed, only a small section of it. It had not. We were looking at doing some house cleaning work to try to resolve that issue. It cannot be done in that fashion that it was presented, so we asked for it to be pulled and we've asked the consultant to correct his plat.
Would that create additional legislation, Robert, down the road where we have to correct the original ordinance that adopted this?
The only problem is there's some existing sewer maintenance in that section of the alley. We really don't want to close and abandon it as long as that sewer maintenance is being used for that purpose.
I'm just saying from a legislative standpoint, is the existing ordinance that was adopted originally okay?
It would have not, no, sir, it was not okay.
We need to remove that ordinance.
It would, yes, the ordinance has to be removed because we'd have to do a new petition. Two different property owners are involved.
I'm saying that, Art, are you seeing what I'm saying, that we need to do an amendment to rescind the original ordinance? We'll talk about it offline, but I think the original ordinance that was adopted.
Is okay.
That you're amending is okay.
The original ordinance is okay.
Good, then.
But we're not, we're not impede the construction that's underway.
Has no effect on the construction.
All right.
All right, we're good to go on that. Any other comments regarding these ordinances? We will certainly follow the instructions of the council, I mean, the administration by pulling that tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, where are we there, Mr. Crawford? Have we finished?
Table legislation.
Table legislation. Any table legislation need to be come off the table?
Mr. Chairman, tomorrow I will ask that we take number three, ordinance 46 of 2016, off the table and place it back on our agenda. That will allow us to advertise public hearing and take it up at our next meeting.
Fine. Ordinance.
46? 46.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Make note of that. Okay, we are finished with the reading of our legislation. Mr. Crawford, thank you for your service.
Yes, sir.
Appeals, private standard?
We have.
None. We may be able to go home early anyway, okay.
Go back to work.
Who said let's go? Who said?
Go back to work. Go back to work.
Don't say that. I was planning on going back to work. Now I got to go through something with Councilman Flurry.
You want to help me? I got some stuff I need to.
All righty. Reports from officers, boards or committees.
Well, master plan committee may meet this Friday. We are waiting on confirmation from a few of the members to see if we have enough members to get a quorum together on Friday. We are trying to meet a little earlier than our typical monthly meeting this month because there's a large grant that's available to implement some aspects of the master plan that the MPC and Cattle Parish Commission have been considering and we wanted to kind of talk about it in that group since it has members of the council commission and MPC so that we could all kind of hear about it together and make a decision on if we want to pursue it. So we'll keep y'all posted. I appreciate that.
That may have been to my heart.
Councilman Corbin, regarding the audit committee, I haven't spoke to the internal auditor. Are you familiar with the progress of the review?
I have not received an update since the last meeting, but I did receive the letter that we had been given the extension.
Have been given the extension. Let's do it.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Yes.
And so that our timetable now is what?
August 31st.
August 31st?
Yes.
We should be able to complete by then, I guess.
Hopefully.
I mean, all the impediments, and we understood that depth within the city departments caused some delay. Are there any other impediments?
I think the primary issue was that as well as a change in software.
Okay.
But hopefully, they will be able to complete and get the information they need, the records that they need within that two-month extension period.
All right, if there's any items or things that need to be discussed by the council members, please contact the chair of the audit committee.
Maybe we can just go ahead and ask at our next meeting for an update.
Okay.
Having him come update us.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for those reports. Our clerk, Mr. Thompson.
I have no report, Mr. Chairman.
No report from the clerk. He may want to. I think, since our last meeting, we had depth in the current council, I mean, the clerk's office.
At the last meeting, it was on a Tuesday, when Lynette got home, she found out that her father had died. And so the funeral services were last Friday and Saturday. The chairman attended and represented the council will at that event and the council also sent flowers. And also Terry was in the hospital all weekend, part of last week, but she's back at work today.
Great.
We're, I think we had full force right there.
Full force. Good to see Ms. Johnson back on the job.
Good to be back.
Good. And let me mention.
Mr. Flurry said he would intervene and get her some of what she needed, but I think she took care of it.
He's such a nice guy. He intends.
Trying to hep out.
He was going to make sure and sample it first.
Yeah, and let me also mention that the clerk gave a real nice, and made expressions at the funeral of Lynette's father and just articulated how valuable Lynette has been to the council office since her being there, 26 years, is it?
26 years.
26. But anyway, it was a nice service, good man. I think some of you may have known him, if you remember, there was a garage next to Freeman and Harris, the old Freeman and Harris, down on Western Avenue, now Pete Harris Boulevard. He owned that garage and mechanic there for years. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Additional communications from the mayor?
None, thank you.
None from the mayor? Are there any communications from council members?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Robert, I hate to ask you to come back up here. While Robert's coming up, I meant to say this earlier. Before the meeting, I was coming back from lunch and a line avenue between Brooks and Holsey Street, there's an expansion issue.
Yes, sir.
That we need to address.
When we do the widening for line up?
Well, I mean, it's, no, it's something that's blown up today.
Oh, okay.
That needs that sort of attention. It's in the inside southbound lane. But my question for you is Common Street overpass, is that ours, is that the state?
The overpass on Interstate 20 and the ramp belong to the state.
The overpass over the railroad tracks?
That is ours.
I saw cars today become airborne on that. Is there any temporary fix until the whole thing can be rebuilt, which is I'm sure what needs to happen?
What we have is on the south end of the bridge, and I know that's where you're talking about, Councilman, there is material that is filled in the expansion joint on the south end of that bridge and subsequently, as the bridge is tied to expand, it can't, so it's created a little pop-up in the end panels. And I've talked to our maintenance department about possibly trying to fix this. We are looking at trying to address that.
It's only getting worse.
Is that something that would be fixed by that, and then Mike Wood, I think this clerk, Ernie, was telling me about a machine they're looking at that would be better street repairs, more focused, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, sir. There's two things, there's two ways to view this. Number one would be to cut a large expansion joint and allow the pavement to expand out. Either that or to remove and replace the panels depending upon what the base condition is underneath where the panels have picked up. We're looking at doing some repairs here in addition to a section of Common Street to the north of the bridge between Common and Crockett that as you drive northbound, da-da-da-da-da, as you're coming up to the intersection. And we're going to try to look at doing both of them at the same time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
And the last thing I have, which is not for Robert, we were talking about grass earlier and Councilman Efferson brought up curbs and sidewalks and all that. As we begin to get ourselves posture for 2017 budget talks. And I know I've got a lot of concrete curb in the district that I serve. In the past two years, I'll just use East Kings Highway as an example. From 70th Street to south of LSUS, a large portion of that curb has been, had to be replaced and some sections of the road replaced. And a lot of it, I feel, primarily comes from grass making the curb disintegrate, basically. You have grass coming over the curb and then allowing water damage into the street. So all that to say, if there is a piece of equipment we need to buy to better edge a curb, other than having 10 guys and weed eaters out there, there's got to be something that goes on the back of a tractor or a machine or something like that. But I think that long-term, not only would that look much better for the areas of our city that have concrete curbs, but it may save us down the road in road repairs and curb repairs as well. That's all I got.
Thank you. And I concur that if we need.
We got it. We can find, we can find such a piece of equipment.
There's a machine out there.
I understand, in any area of maintaining the city that.
Yes, yes.
Additional revenue equipment is needed and we.
We're going to use it everywhere now.
I'm sorry?
We'll use it everywhere. We won't just use it in one district.
I understand.
When we buy stuff, we don't buy it in just one area.
We want to do everything we can to maintain the maintenance of this city.
Absolutely.
I think we're doing a good job, but I think this unusual weather has created some challenges that we are.
Last 18 months, it's been tough.
Let me ask, Mayor, and I'm going to speak to Mr. Washington after the meeting, okay? Now, I got the communication and thank you for calling as well as emailing regarding Hannah Street.
Yes.
When is that projected to start? And the bus route is going to affect when?
The bus route has already gone into.
It has been in effect.
The diversion on the bus route's already gone into effect and we've sent that out to the media as well, so they know about it.
Okay.
And then the street should be finished this week, Robert.
The contractors and anticipating start working on Hannah Street tomorrow.
Oh.
Should take two days?
Approximately two days.
And we'll be done.
That's the whole entire block?
From Laguardia to Montana.
Good.
That's certainly the worst part.
That take all of my complaints.
Very good.
Grading.
I can save some minutes on my, on my, on my, on my. May I know what I'm talking about?
Just save some minutes.
I know, I've been getting the same complaints.
Have you?
And of course, you know, that's part of our street maintenance for 2016.
And it's needed, I mean, especially with the bus, being a bus route, save on, save on wear and tear on those buses, especially.
Right, right.
So if you stay off for just a second, Mr. Washington, I'm going to speak to you, okay? All righty, are there any other communications from council members or the mayor?
Nothing from us.
Is there any other business that needs to come before this council? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.